For tonight, Tuesday, October 12th. Heather, can you please take the roll?
Okay. Councilmember Rockman?
Here.
Mayor Beaton?
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Mayor Protam Schmansky?
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Here.
And Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Here.
Public comments on work session related items. I don't really see any public here. Oh, here's footsteps. We're going to have a discussion on the MDNR land conversion requirement for the Marina property sale to Fricano's Manistee Rivers, presented by City Manager William Gamble.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll start off in 1974, the city of Manistee acquired riverfront property using Michigan Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Funds. When these funds are used to acquire or develop property, the property is dedicated to recreation in perpetuity unless a conversion takes place. A conversion of use occurs when one or both of the following situations occur. A grant assisted site or portion of the site is no longer available for public outdoor recreation or property rights in or control of the grant assisted site, portion of the site are conveyed by a grantee to another entity. Page two of your conversion handout provides an overview of the conversion process. I provided that at your council seats. We are currently at step one for this Fricano's conversion. This is the early coordination and establishment of the boundary conversion. So over the last several weeks, we've been in contact with Erin Campbell from the MDNR to help move this process along. Erin provided the grant documents from 1974 when the city acquired the parcels. The MDNR asked if we could help confirm the exact acreage and location of the conversion area. So there were a couple parcels, some were, you know, acquisition areas, some had some development, which was basically curb sidewalks, benches, and I think they're trying to figure out where it falls in between acquisition and development. Sean overlaid the survey with the parcels from the 1974 grant documents, and that's what you see in front of you. I'm going to turn it over to Sean to kind of go through this a little bit. The blue area is the area we're talking about sending to Fricano's.
Thanks, Bill. So just to summarize what you're looking at here, we, previously, there was a survey that was for the Fricano parcel. The former boathouse deck, or now currently, I guess, the Fricano property, the decks that surround that building actually encroach onto the Marina. They bent, before he bought it, those were encroaching on the property. So as part of that process in acquiring it, he really needed to acquire what we referred to as an enhancement piece beyond the limits of the property. So that area that's in kind of a purplish blue there, that was the limits of what was needed to enhance the property, to incorporate the deck at his building. And that's .082 acres. It's not a lot of land, but it's land he needed to no longer have his deck on, basically city property. And it did extend a little bit beyond that for potential enhancement. That, as Bill was describing, sits on Marina property, and that, the areas shown in orange are from a 1974 document that we reviewed. That document is a little bit vague, to be honest, exactly to the details of what was acquired, but basically, and we're still continuing to research it with MDNR, we're hoping they have some more backup documentation. But they identified two parcels that were to be sold, or acquired, in 1974, and they totaled 1.5 acres. Those two on the left that really take up the Marina property are what are identified in that document. So the main purpose of this document is to kind of show where we're overlaying, it's .082 acres, and the limits of what was identified in 1974. There were some other areas that initially identified in that document, over by the Westshore Community College, was actually shown as an acquisition, but then there was an amendment that deleted a half an acre, and they weren't very specific about what that half acre was, but we're fairly confident it was that piece, because obviously, that's been under private ownership for a substantial time. But that's the way the document was laid out. Is there anything else, Bill?
I think I'm going to pull up that.
You want that, no?
We'll go down to the next one. So this is going to be, these are the documents from that grant, the grant agreement back in 1974, some things in '73, but I wonder if I can use a laser. So this is the three parcels, these are the three parcels, and you can see the middle one, they actually have, it looks like a drafter did it, but it says restaurant, so that's really the Fricano's site. But as you can see, it's not as detailed as the GIS we pay, but these are the documents that, I'm very grateful that Sean was able to overlay. Okay, so we'll move on to the next step, is kind of going ahead with this conversion. What is, you know, what happens after this, and what's the, what happens when we do a conversion? Basically, we get triggered into a 50-point deduction on every, I think it's 40 points for the land and water grant, but 50 points for a trust fund grant. And I'll just switch the overhead for a second so you can see the scoring sheet.
There we go.
Thank you. So that's kind of what exists on these. So while you have this conversion in place, you lose 50 points during the application, or if it's not resolved before the final scoring of the application. The reason this is important is because we have a Veterans Memorial Park Improvement Project that Jeff and Spicer submitted last year. It's a $410,000 project that repairs that area of the North River Walk that's much, that's really needed. So the applications due April 1st, we'd have to have this conversion completed and everything before October 1st, 2022. So last year, we received 315 points. And Heather, if we have a big display two, we can show them the kind of the grant design. So last year, we received 315 points of 500 for this grant project. I think we were hoping to gain 10 to 15 points this time, maybe adding some more ADA features, things like that, maybe some green infrastructure, but if we lose 50 points, it won't be close. We won't get it. So that's why this is important, that we kind of move quickly on this. Display three. So one of the, you've, one of the, the whole process is you sell land, it triggers this conversion, and then you have to offer replacement land, or what they call a mitigation property. Right now, we're looking at proposing this Ninth Street boat launch. The city purchased a 10-acre parcel from Morton Salt in 2020. The parcel formerly had easement for access to the Ninth Street boat access site, and it was also an entrance to the wastewater treatment facility. The boating access site has been in place for decades, however, it's, it was created on parcels owned by Morton Salt and Consumers Energy, thus making a challenge to improve the site with grant money. We were talking to Erin Campbell and proposed this site at the MDNR. She mentioned that typically, replacement land should not already be in use for public outdoor recreation purposes. It has to be of equal or greater fair market value and recreational usefulness. Since the city didn't previously own this, we're going to ask that the National Park Service make an initial determination on it. We would argue that it was just an easement with Morton Salt before, but now it could be used in recreation in perpetuity now that the city owns it. So we'll see what they say. If they deny this site, then we have to find another area, city-owned site that would, we could use for recreation.
Sorry?
I'm sorry? You can ask the question.
Okay. What if we don't find a site?
So then we'd be, the conversion wouldn't be complete. We'd have to keep working towards finding one.
But then you would lose those points, right?
Right.
And you couldn't do the veterans.
Correct.
Okay.
So that's, that is the conundrum.
But how long does it take for them to find out, like, if this Ninth Street boat launch is acceptable, like, how long does that, how long do they take to tell you that so we don't miss that timeframe?
So that's, I think that's going to be the next step. We try to get her, we try to get an initial determination with the National Park Service, and that is a federal branch, so sometimes it does take a while. I'm hoping, by her saying it's just an initial review, that it'll be relatively quick, but I think in the meantime, we should start looking at other sites as well, so that we're prepared to move forward with an alternate plan if we need it.
Do you have other sites in mind?
I'm thinking about a couple, but, you know, there's that one behind North Channel that we haven't been able to sell. I don't know if that could be a little pocket park, but...
What about up there off of 55 where we have the walk, the bike track there? Is there additional land we could add to that white, walking and bike path out there?
Tell me about the Burger King, or?
No, it's farther, it's off 55 out by the prison. We have a non-motorized spot out there that's on city land that they have a biking, walking track out there that was developed. I wonder if we could add land to that from city-owned property out of, there's space.
So it's, so there's a chunk that's already park land. We'd have to get, you're right, expand.
Is there additional land available contiguous to that that you could add to that, though?
We'd have to look at, I'm not sure what's adjacent to that.
Yeah, we had quite a bit of property out there on 55. We own a lot of property actually out there.
Yeah, that could be an option, definitely.
You could make a trailhead with that much space. And if you get this acquisition, Ninth Street becomes a spot, does that open Ninth Street up to grant possibilities from the DNR to approve the boat, the docking and the launch and all that, though?
It does, and, you know, and also, you know, we could add, we're just doing that park master plan. I was going to see if we can add something about a kayak launch, we could turn it into a kayak launch. There's not a lot of parking there, but maybe that's one thing we look at, too.
Have we talked to consumers about the possibility of purchasing next to the boat launch, the consumer's property that is?
That would probably be a good Jeff question, but, yeah, we can look into it. So any ideas about other sites, I think, yeah, please send them my way out, we can take a look at them.
Does it have to, oh, so go ahead, you're on. Does it have to offer the same thing that it, the other site did?
So they have two different values that they look at. It's, they look at, and actually, with land and water conservation funds, it needs to have fair, I think, yellow book appraisals that they look at, and then there's recreational usefulness they look at. So they want to make sure it's considered fair, a fair trade.
What if, for instance, we open land up, we have a lot of land on 55 that's not being used, and we don't let people hunt it. What if you open that land up for hunting? Would that be a perpetual use that would comply? Sean, do you think?
I'm not sure on that, the hunting part.
There's quite a few acres out there that are just, we logged them a few years ago, right, Ed, maybe, what, 10 years ago?
Yeah.
And a lot of people wanted to hunt it, but we never allowed people to hunt it, it's all posted, maybe just allowing that to be open for hunting to public use. I mean, it's out in the county, everything else around it is open to hunting, so.
Doesn't it have to be water-based, though, like, what we're taking away?
That's what I thought, with the recreational usefulness, it's comparable to that, but this one, you, I mean, the Fricano's site, it's technically, it's by the water, but you don't have access to the water, is what we're talking about, so we could make a, we could, we could make an argument that...
There's a gap between his property and the water.
Right. So we could just say that allowing hunting here is same as being able to enjoy water here, and this values.
You might be able to open up 100 acres of hunting versus one.
So that's, that's a good thing, we can propose to them, see what they say. So we'll just start gathering these, and I think we'll find one that makes it work.
Could we go back to the first slide, please, and have Sean come forward? I have a question on the parcels. Okay. I, I thought I had looked at this a long time ago, and what I remember when I looked at this property, that all of this was platted in through here at one time. Did it all get combined?
So right now, the Marina, actually, when you look at the tax maps, is literally one big parcel. So that's, this document from 1974, for whatever reason, back in 1974, had broken it up into these pieces. There was no legal descriptions with them. There was that sketch that Bill had pulled up on the screen, and that was it.
Okay.
We can't see, we've been digging, we're going to check with the DNR to see if there's any more. There's not a lot of background on these three orange areas, to be real honest with you. Nothing we're used to having in terms of survey legals, and we could draw it out, so...
I could, in my memory, I remember looking at this a few months ago, and for some reason, I looked at something that showed, like, where Fricano's deck is going out. It seemed like there were three different parcels there, or I want to say, plans, it was platted.
Are you thinking about this survey that Spicer provided? If you look at your screen.
Yeah, I remember seeing that one.
Is that, is that what you're thinking? Because that can explain what you're looking at.
Possibly, it's close, but...
So this...
You know, I could just be dead wrong, but that's what I remember. That's why I was wondering if it was all combined.
So I think this is what led to confusion. We submitted this to the DNR, and I think, you know, we have a parcel A, B, and I think we have a C in here, and then they were trying to match it up to parcel A, B, and C on their 1974. So that's why, that's why we had Sean put this together with their parcel A, B, and C, and then basically, just the Fricano conversion area with the blue.
Okay.
So, so just, just to go back to the Ninth Street boat launch, when we're talking about comparison, what's the acreage that we are proposing to convert from?
Which one was that?
Because it looks like it'd be an acre...
That is .082.
Right.
And then it's about a half an acre, what we drew up there.
Okay.
Now, that could change, that's, it could change, but what you're looking at, there's about a half an acre or so.
Which is more?
Considerably more.
Yeah, and we also own the property going towards the, the water waste treatment facility on the water's edge, so potentially, if we wanted to expand into the property that's not currently utilized for your, we could give them, we could basically take the tenth or the point eight of an acre, point zero eight of an acre, and make that outside of this box.
That's a great idea, and I think we could actually just, if we plug up a kayak launch to the north, that's a completely new area.
Exactly, and then now you, now they don't have a, there's no contention with it already being existing, we're going to take, put that kayak launch on that acreage on Ninth Street going towards the water waste treatment facility. And if I understand, I've been out there, there's, there wouldn't be anything that would prevent that, I don't think.
Right, it could be a walkway along the shoreline, you know.
It'd be a fishing, a fishing pier, like we've done.
Fishing pier, combination with a kayak launch, exactly, which is new in addition to the boat access.
And, and that wouldn't, wouldn't interfere with anything, because we have no plans for that piece of real estate, correct?
Correct.
I, I have another question. I apologize, I don't really know too much about this point system. I'm just trying to think, because, I mean, this Ninth Street boat site is, to me, and what I do, is way more valuable than the strip that we're talking about, but I don't understand why we wouldn't make sure that that could be approved first before we do this. Like, if it doesn't get approved, and we find something else, and that doesn't get approved, like, it's going to create like a domino effect, and then we're not going to have that money for the veterans park. So in my mind, we're doing it backwards, but I don't know if I'm understanding it correctly. Does that make sense?
I agree. Well, finding the site was, was, is, is a big part of it.
Okay.
So this was the initial idea, but, you know, we just found out that it's potentially not a good site, so we are...
But can't he wait? I mean, is there a reason why he can't wait to see if we get this approved first?
You can, well, we can. We wouldn't be able to sell the property. So the conversion's triggered when we sell the property, so...
So it hasn't been sold, it had, it hasn't been executed, fully executed, then?
Okay, and I guess to answer your question, I think it, we could start looking for other sites, then do the, execute the sale, that's true, but my thought was that we'd execute the sale and just look for, for sites and make this happen, just to, but we could, we could do it the other way.
Well, I mean, we don't have to, but I'm just, I'm trying to think of the negative, like, what if one of these sites doesn't get approved? And we, we're on a time crunch now, now we're backed in a corner because we gave away this little piece, but...
And I think probably, you know, hearing this, I think probably submitting a couple sites, just saying, hey, we could do one here, we could do one here, maybe with this hunting area work, and I just send them all and say, could you see if the DNR is amenable to either of these or any of these, and then we can kind of move forward. I'm not, but I don't know how quickly they're going to get back to us, so that's just an unknown, but I would assume it's not an in-depth process when she says it's a preliminary approval.
You could resurvey this to see if you can make that wedge in there and make it fit.
Yeah, we could, we can definitely do that. So, and it sounds like the only reason they don't like this one is because it was previously recreation. It's even in our, is one of our inventories in master plan.
So by adding on, then, the point, you know, tenth of an acre onto that, onto the...
To the north.
I don't know what, yeah, I guess that's north, I can't tell by the...
That was...
Right.
Yep, yep.
So if we add a tenth of an acre, then we should be in high cotton with them, right?
Yeah, it should, it seems like a very good opportunity.
Especially if it's a brand-new, if you, you say that it's a new amenity, that it's going to be a kayak launch and fishing pier, that would be awesome.
And we all know, too, that the piece, that 10 acres, it's hard to see on there to the north, there is a line that kind of comes a little east and west, it's a little bit north, northwest, but that's the limits of the 10-acre piece we've got. North of that is still city property, even beyond that, so even that, if we needed it, could go that far, but I don't think we would actually need it for that far.
And you would commit to fishing pier until you got the land, so I'm putting in for grant for that, because there's no sense of paying for a fishing pier if it's available for water waste money, right? I mean, you would...
That's a good point, how we...
Wouldn't make sense to commit, saying we're going to put a fishing pier in there until they, once we get the land, they can buy for 50, 50 grand or something, because we would never want to commit to that until...
With the kayak launch, you could almost do in-house temporarily, you could make a...
Buy a couple pads, yeah?
Yeah, just, just basically cut in, and even just use pavers, for that matter.
The only kicker is ADA accessibility will be required, so that does kind of complicate it a little.
And they want to see a recreation, they want to see a little bit of a plan for the site, so just, you know, saying we want to do a kayak launch there, it's going to be helpful.
I like this idea here a lot.
Isn't there already some of this in the county plan?
It is, but, so, for example, I just emailed them, Rob, today, I was, because they didn't, we didn't have a kayak for the Ninth Street, so I was questioning if we can add, it's the review period, so we can add that, but now I'm thinking, let's not do that, and just, if we propose the area to the north, and then I'll just put that as a new, completely new amenity, new site, and I'm thinking that would be a better way to do it at this point.
You are in contact with everybody, though?
Yeah, Rob, yep, I did send them an email today. So just a couple other things to consider is the, MDNR investigates if a conversion is either a large or a small conversion, and talking with Erin from the MDNR, she stated that, you know, if we're converting over 10% of the encumbered area, that triggers a large conversion. We're talking about converting .081 acres of, I think we have a disagreement, I think it's the 1.92 acres, which is 4.2%, but even if it's the 1.5 acres, we're still under that 10%. But the other interesting one, as she mentioned, a sale over 25,000 triggers a large conversion, so I know what we talked, what happened earlier, we had a certain amount, it's something to consider. Having a larger conversion, having a large conversion as opposed to a small requires additional levels of environmental review and Eagle Action Step plans, so it's just something to consider. And you should know that, so Erin from the DNR stated conversions typically, typically take anywhere from six months to five years to complete, but that's people who aren't kind of moving along on them. The Land and Water Conservation Fund is a pass-through grant from the federal government, so the National Park Service needs to sign off, which we talked about. This adds some time to the process. These grants require, as I stated, the yellow book appraisal, environmental screening, and a SHPO review from the state. So it's on page, you can read about the additional requirements of land and water on page six of that handout. So it's just something to consider about if we want to see if we can keep, try to do anything we can to keep it to be a smaller review, because it's already kind of a hefty one. The last thing, I just mentioned, I spoke with Erin just to kind of find out if there's any other approvals that we need before the sale. She said, no, just, you know, getting that initial approval from the National Park Service, and I think we now have a plan about giving them a couple options. The other, and the negative repercussions are just that negative 50 points. So the second we sell it, we sign it, we're on, we're on the clock to finish that. Once we finish it, the negative 50 points will be taken off. So the next steps will continue, we can continue with the parcel split. Council can consider an addendum to sell the parcel for maybe 24, 500, if they choose to try to trigger that small conversion. Staff would pursue all the administrative steps, including we have to do a public review, declaration, and notice process, and I think the goal would be to have this completed by August 2022. So, thank you, and I'd like to open up to any more questions at this time.
I got one more question, sorry. The, the deadline to get it done, you said it was August?
So that's the goal, but really, so...
Is that just to sell the property, or to get everything?
That would just be a staff goal, because we really have to have it done, so we submit the grant application in April, they give you an initial scoring in August, and then they ask you to fix anything you can, and you get your final score October 1st, so really, we just...
For everything, though, not just the sale of this little piece?
Right, I'd want to get the whole conversion done.
Okay.
That's the, that would be my goal, so that we don't lose points.
Okay.
I have a question. How, as far as Fricano's, does this hold them up from doing what they need to do? Can they do, not do anything until this happens, or what, what's going on there?
So we'd need to sell, we'd need to sell them the property for them to move forward.
So they're sitting there waiting for us right now?
Right.
Wait, wait, to move forward with what?
With their deck, with their deck.
They can't open their business?
They could open their business, yeah, I'm sorry, for their deck, and they want to put, I think, 150 seats out there, so...
They could, but they use the current deck, they can open the restaurant, right? They just can't expand until then, is that true or no?
I guess I'm not sure exactly where the deck lies on the, on this parcel map, but I would say we need to do this conversion for them to, yeah, for them to do their outdoor deck.
Do they currently have a lease on that property that they're, I mean, this will change it from a lease to a purchase, right?
So technically, even having a lease, if it's, if it's part of that encumbered land, there really shouldn't be a lease, because that takes away the ability to use it in recreation, so...
Sort of, yeah, there's never been a lease on that for 30 years?
Part of it.
That's my understanding, but if anyone...
I don't think the previous owners paid the lease.
Well, doesn't, doesn't, existing, it's still exist, I mean, I mean, 440 had a lease down there, and, yeah, okay, all right.
And that probably could have, that could have triggered that conversion earlier, but...
So we have, we have sales, we have a buy and sell agreement that's sitting somewhere in the safe, and it hasn't been executed yet, it hasn't been recorded, so...
So the buy-sell agreement got extended one, only one month, and that's probably already expired, so I think we probably don't have one, we'd have to double-check with George.
Yeah.
Because it didn't get extended again.
Yeah, it probably should be extended.
I mean, I think, I think it needs to be discussed as to whether, you know, you want to do the sale first before the conversion's completed, what impact that might have on, on their development plans, because maybe those 150 seats or whatever he's going to get out there are critical to his business.
Yeah, that's right.
But, but I think, I think the agreement, if it hasn't expired, it probably is, and would, would need another extension of some sort. But to Bill's point, just to make it clear, if, if council was interested in trying to expedite this, they might consider lowering that purchase price below that $25,000 threshold to make this more smoother, because it would make it faster.
Well, and that might be a negotiating tool, going back to Fricano, is that, hey, you know, the plus side to this is that it may be $9,100 less than it's currently being offered to you for.
Yeah, I think it was 30, and you need to get it to 24 or 500. So, yeah. But I don't know what, know how big of a difference that would make, Bill's had those conversations, but that's what Bill was getting at, I think, there's some ways that we can make this...
Easier to have it.
Easier for us, yeah.
Right.
And 50 points is, is impossible to overcome.
It would kill it.
Well, it'd kill every other project that we'd have as well, as long until we got it resolved, because that's, five points makes a big difference sometimes, 50 is impossible.
Correct.
It's at your phone.
Getting close to Halloween.
Thought we were going to be done by then.
Well, you have a lot to say. So, okay, so... So, okay, so where do we leave this now? Do, are we going to bring it back to council, bring it back to council vote?
That's, yeah, I think that would be the next, and I have the, we have the parcel split on the next agenda, so we can move forward with that, and I can see if, we'd see how quickly we can get a new purchase agreement drafted up.
Yeah.
So if not this next one, the one after. But in the meantime, to Councilman Sullivan's point, I think sending in some options just to get that initial approval. I can say, we met with council, we're moving forward, here's some options we're looking at, can we get an approval on one of these? I think that will help.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Do you anticipate that taking longer than the timeframe we're talking about, or you just don't know?
I don't know, and I can tell you, I had a grant that was held up by the National Park Service from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, it was held up a year and a half. I don't think that'll be that, it's just a response, but you never, you really don't know how long it'll take some of these bigger entities to respond to things.
And would it help to say, you know, this is kind of crunch, can we get it ASAP?
I will ask.
I mean, maybe...
The sooner we know, the better.
Yeah, would seem like it, and I sure don't want to stop this restaurant from going in and back them up or anything, so whatever we can do to help with that.
Can I ask how long, like, when that purchase agreement was written?
Are you talking about the ninth, the one for Fracano?
Yeah, for the parcel.
Um, I don't, that was before I arrived, so...
I know it was signed the first weekend off.
Six months of the year, I have to look at the exact date.
Okay.
I'm just wondering why it's taken so long to get to this point, like, I don't like to be, like, rushed, and then we've got a deadline that...
Well, the reason that the sale hasn't gone through yet is, is because of this issue, because when, when they were negotiating that, Fracano's was still lining up his financing to actually acquire the property. This came after that, but there also was some conversations about, well, this is Marina property, what do we need to do? So Mark Miller reached out to the DNR, since he used to work for them, and got some information that came back, and then we had to do the parcel split, so it's, it's just the process. It hasn't been delayed.
Okay.
This right here is what's going to end up delaying it, you know, beyond where it needed to be.
Okay.
We were going to have the parcel split on a previous agenda until this came up.
Okay.
And looking at some old memos, it looks like they originally thought it was the waterways grant that established the Marina that we'd be contending with, and that has a little bit different, you have like a 40-year recreation or 20, a useful life or 20-year commitment to the, to recreation use, but then we found out, you know, after more digging, and it was working with the DNR, and this is before I got here, but it looks like they just kind of found these documents from 1974, and it's like, no, it's the Land and Water Conservation Fund, these are the requirements you have to go through. So it was kind of figuring out what approvals we're going to need, and then they want to figure out, like, that whole development versus acquisition, which portions of these, and I don't think it really says in those documents, and I think they're trying to, they have to do some fact-finding, too, because they don't have all the answers on, on what was done exactly with, with which parcel.
So if we, if we get a new purchase agreement, and they, and we agree to that purchase agreement, he has the funds available and can close, or is that like a timeframe, too? Because I don't want to say yes, and then we drag out the closing, and then we're, you know, behind in time.
He was ready to close a couple of months ago.
Okay.
But when this topic came up, we kind of put that on pause. I think he has the funds available.
Okay, so he's just waiting for us to say, yeah, okay?
The ball isn't our court, that's...
Okay. But worst-case scenario, if we do close on it, and we don't get the, we can't do the conversion to these other properties, then we're out, you know, our, our ability to improve the veterans' park.
And there's no guarantee we get that grant anyway, but definitely with the negative 50 points, we're, we're not getting it.
Well, really, the biggest thing is the deck, and I don't think there's going to be a lot of outdoor seating in the cold weather if this had to drag on, so he could certainly still open his restaurant, because most people are going to want to eat inside at that point.
I, I got another question. So if we could, in the purchase agreement, I don't know if we can, put in the contingency that we need to make sure that we've secured another spot before he closes on that property, could, could we do that?
That's an interesting thing.
Yeah, that's, I think we could do that.
Yeah, because if he's, if he's ready to go, and he's got the funds, and he's just waiting for us, then it's almost winter time, like, it shouldn't be a problem to put in that contingency that we have to find a spot that's, you know, going to be accepted before he closes on that property, otherwise it's void.
And if it don't, about in advance, it would have been in the first contract, and it should have been there.
I really think they're going to love the idea of that kayak launch to the north, but...
But I think that contingency helps us, because then we don't lose all of that...
Yeah.
That's a good point. Okay, we can, we can put that in there.
Can you, I'm, I'm still a little bit confused about, you've got the purplish-blue area, but then there's a green and a yellow, like, sort of backwards L kind of thing, is that, what part is that about?
That is an easement, which we don't...
It's nothing we have to worry about, or...
A lot of information about, but if you, and I'm sorry, this doesn't show up really well, but it's that red area, and actually, I think the, I think Erin from the MDNR pointed that out, but it's, it's an easement, and I don't know if it was road, road right-of-way at some point.
There's a sewer down through there.
Awesome.
And that's Elks, is that the Elks?
Next to the Elks.
Right, next to the Elks.
Okay.
It's in between the Elks and the Fracano's building.
But that's not in question, and that's the nice thing we have to worry about.
Which, what's one of the difficulties is these documents, they show up in the sketch and drawing, but they're not anywhere else called out. There's no, there's nothing that discusses an easement.
There we go.
Yeah, that's the better one there.
Oh, okay.
So that, that little easement area that's called out, parcel B, then, that's not identified anywhere in the agreement or any of the...
Okay, okay.
So, so we have it, we noted it, we overlay it, just because we have this drawing, but honestly, legally, it doesn't appear to be part of the...
Anything, okay, all right.
So that's what we're trying to get background information from the DNR.
For sure.
And the land next to the restaurant was the Elks property, correct? It was never ours.
It was never, it was, it was the same issue, their building was encroaching, and right on it, didn't have a rate setback, so they, they requested from the Elks property.
Right, okay.
All right, does he, is, has the, the owner of the new restaurant, has he, like, so is he just waiting on us to open, to do whatever he's got to do next, or, I, I'm just, because I, I'm, me or beaten, might be right, I mean, because we're coming up on winter, we could still have the restaurant without...
Yeah, is there anything stopping him from...
Maybe he does, he wants to...
I, I don't know that we know where the owner of the restaurant is, he's doing renovations, but you're right, nobody's going to be using the deck in the winter, but if he needs to get it built so it can open up in the spring, that could be problematic. So I think probably...
Okay, from his side.
...it's out to him to figure out exactly where he's at, and you have to have these conversations anyway if there's going to be a new purchase.
Right.
But he's, I mean, he's obviously working on it, but it's not, it's not open yet, but the deck thing, I just don't know how big of an issue that is for him, but potentially big, because people, once the weather gets nice, like to sit outside, so...
Well, I'd love for him to know that we're trying to do this, and trying to do it right, and...
This conversation needed to happen once we found out about it, so then we can go in with complete information, so we're not wasting anybody's time.
Right.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All right, well, thank you very much.
I should say that.
So, gosh, I guess I feel like there's another question, like, so what, what's happening now?
I'm going to take the, so the lot, the parcel split's going to come on the next agenda, and we're going to get the sale on the next, if not this next agenda, the agenda after. So it's, we're going to try to move forward with it, and concurrently, I'm going to be asking if they'll approve certain areas as a conversion or the mitigation property.
Okay.
All right?
That sounds great.
I don't see anything under other. I am curious if some of the first have anything they want to talk about at our next work session.
I, I was really interested in, after hearing from our Parks and Rec Committee people, kind of what's going on with that, and what do we need to do to help them, and it sounds like they had things they wanted to do, but nothing ever seemed to get anywhere, so I don't know if that would be a work session thing, or what, but I would love to help them move forward.
We're looking at a reservation system, I think I had an idea, but we're, we're kind of looking at, you know, what, what can we use with our existing technology to do a reservation system? I know that was kind of a major point they were looking at.
Were you going to have a work session with them?
I did, yeah, I didn't have it for this particular one, but it was going to be, originally we had a safe built for this one and this, and I thought it would be on a future one, so I apologize if you thought it was going to be on this next one.
I, I would like to have a discussion with council members. I would love to see that all of our commissions are videotaped, so the public can actually see them. I think there'd be a lot more transparency that way, and it was, you know, people could watch them, and we could say, hey, that was just discussed at such and such. The minutes really don't reflect what's being discussed in a lot of these, on a lot of these commissions, so I think it's to a benefit to move into the 21st century and get them videotaped, if that's even the right terminology, but we, we absolutely need that. So that's my personal opinion, and I think we need to do for the public and for ourselves, because not all of us have time to run around to all of these...
Specials and their day meetings for us, working.
Right, committee meetings.
We all would have to meet in here, though, right?
Or Zoom, or Teams, or something like that, but...
So the DDA is, meets down at the Wester College Building, but Barry Lynn videotapes those. The only practical way to do it for all the other committee meetings is to have it in this room, and then somebody has to know how to run that system. So there's some challenges to get over there, but it can be done.
I really think it'd be beneficial to the community.
I mean, Zoom can be done probably up until the end of the year under the county emergency, but beyond that, there's no ability to do any virtual meetings. I don't think I'd go down that path, I would just, we have technology, we've invested in it, it's a great meeting room, they might as well use it.
Right.
And we already do it with the Brownfield Authority, we meet up here and videotape our meetings.
Okay.
Oil and Gas doesn't, the Parks Commission doesn't, PEG doesn't.
Arbor.
Arbor Commission doesn't, so there's a few of them that are, you know, maybe have smaller bodies or don't meet as frequent, but there, there would be some challenges to get there, but I would suggest this is the room that it should be done in.
Okay, I'd like to see that happen, and I think it would be a great thing for us to do. Okay, that was my big one. Does anybody else have anything that they'd like to see on?
On the commissions?
No.
On work session?
Next work session, besides safe build.
Well, if we're still talking about commissions, I think that we still need to look into how we appoint people to commissions, because sometimes it's like a popularity contest, and it's not, you're not picking the right person, because they don't even fill out a resume, they're just like, hey, I sat on it before, it was fun, that was it. And I, I think that we need to look into, if people are just sitting on a commission, just taking up space, then somebody needs to have the say, and it's time for them to be removed, not just wait till their, you know, two, three, four years are up. If you're not doing anything, you need to step aside so somebody else can. And I think that the commissions and boards need to come to either like a work session or do some type of presentation or a letter or something monthly, or every other month, not, you know, once a year, once, every six months. I mean, I'm on, I think I'm on two committees for the last two years, and I have no idea what they are, I've never met with anybody, I don't know what they do. If we have these committees and they don't do anything and they don't meet, what's the point? So...
For sure.
All I got.
Think about, we can kind of assess and review what some of, maybe we change some things, they have more productive things come out of some of the committees, but look at their bylaws. Okay?
Some of this might be best handled by George if we're talking about removing people, because I don't know what the process would be for that, how that works.
To document their absences and...
Functionality, and see if they're even, if they're not doing anything, maybe we don't have them at all. How do they put people on them? How's that happen? Just asking.
Things, and they're advertised in the newspaper, and...
And it seems like that we still have openings, right? So...
Yeah, we do.
We're kind of happy if we got a warm body, is that what I'm securing?
Kind of like council, right? You know, how many people ran for council?
Mm-hmm, I guess that's true.
So, it's a lack of interest from the community sometimes.
So maybe, I wonder how we could get more interest in involvement?
Well, I think half of it is that they're discouraged, and they don't know exactly what's going on, and we need to be able to make those connections and have that communication available for them to see what is happening on these commissions.
Or some of them, they're disgruntled, I'd love to have them on the committee so they can maybe help...
Exactly.
...think about things, or be part of something, you know?
Yeah.
But I wonder how we do that? I'm not sure, the process. Is there one?
Well, like, there's an application process, you fill it out.
Yeah, no, but I just mean, how do we get the interest? How do we raise the interest?
Most people are not interested, they just want to bitch and complain on social media, but they don't want to step up and, I am so sorry, I completely, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, they don't want to step up and do anything, they don't want to volunteer, and they don't want to come here and voice their opinion.
Really?
I think it's intimidating, I think that's the first, you know, challenge of anybody who wants to say something to city council. It, it appears to them to be intimidating, and I think if they'd watched some of our council meetings, they'd find that it's not necessarily so.
I think a big, it's a big problem just getting people to make long-term commitments. To volunteer for a event is usually fairly easy, to get somebody to volunteer for something that takes more than a month is very difficult, and I think that's indicative not just of city council committees, but volunteer organizations all over our country. And, and almost every one of us, you know, who have membership in any kind of fraternal order or, or 501(c), has the same problems. How do you get people to, to commit to doing something more than once? I don't know the answer.
Anything else? I'm done.
Bill, do you have?
I don't have anything at this time.
You might have to have a bleep.
All right, we all have to single-handedly go out and recruit somebody for some committee.
Well, I would like to just ask Heather, would you, do we have anything to, to add?
The only thing I have is, next week on the agenda, you will notice that you have closed-session minutes to approve, which you have never had before. It's something that they typically say you approve when you approve the minutes from the meeting that held the closed session. I would like to, closed-session minutes are kept for a year and a day from that time, and they're not foible, they're not, nobody can look at those minutes, except for the city manager, myself, and council. So I am going to have them in an envelope for you, they will be numbered by each district, you can look at them before the meeting, and then they'll be approved on consent, just like the other minutes are, but I do need them returned to me at the end of the meeting. So we could go into closed session to approve the minutes, I just don't think that's necessary. I can give them to you before the meeting, I've already talked to George about it, he said that was fine, they'll be sealed, you can look at them, just reseal, put them back in the envelope and give them back to me, just like you do with your folders. So I just wanted to give you a heads up, because you will have a numbered envelope with your stuff next week. Okay?
Mr. Bradford, anything exciting to share with us?
I just wanted to let you know that Kendra Cook, who is the new deputy treasurer and accountant, will be starting next week, or tomorrow, for a partial week, she'll be a for a partial week. She'll be a partial week the next week, and then she'll be full-time the following week, so we're glad to get her started and, uh, get her trained and get, got, big, get back to full staffing, so.
Thank you. Chief Glass?
Yeah, just one thing, uh, real quick.
Oh, I have something for you.
And, uh, what's that?
I have something for you, too.
Okay. Uh, Chief Cameron and I would both receive those last night, uh, local revenue sharing, so ours were for the winter equipment jackets, hats, and gloves, 'cause we're for fire ropes.
Yeah.
Very good, so.
I had, I had a citizen call me today and said, you know, how do you regulate who's parking in the, in the, you know, where you have the chargers for the electron, for the electric cars? She says, she was very frustrated, because she went over to, you know, with company to go to the, um, the brewery, and, you know, they were plugged up with, obviously, vehicles that were non-electrical vehicles. And I know those are, that's leased equipment, but can we issue tickets, or how do we make that happen?
I think the best answer is, give me some time to research that topic, and I'll get back with the best enforcement option.
And at least put some signs up, or maybe the company will-
Sure.
Pay for the signs.
But let me do the work to research what the legal authority is there, and I'll get back with, uh, the city manager on that issue.
Sometimes they have electric vehicle ordinances, and then you set up the signage, and then it provides some mechanism to, well, as a punishment or something like that, but, yeah, we'll look into it.
Anything else?
How's the school situation going?
It's going pretty well. My understanding is that the traffic engineer should have his report done around the 21st of October. That's the anticipated completion date, and I'll meet with, uh, city manager and Jeff McCula in the school and go over the results of that.
Okay, and then for trick-or-treating, are we doing it Sunday or Saturday, you know, at the citywide? Usually you put out something for trick-or-treating, don't you?
I put out a memo today on that, on our Facebook page, 'cause I didn't discern between Saturday or Sunday. I can look at it. Is it unclear or no?
I didn't look at it, I haven't seen it.
Okay, I, I did, I assume it's on Halloween. It's usually, I think I put 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., which is the standard across the state.
Yeah, you put 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on it, recommended.
I just wanted to say thank you. Your, uh, officer came to our school and read a story to our classroom, and it was really cool.
It's good feedback, I appreciate it.
Chief, do you wanna update real quick on the copper caper?
Yes, we, we've had some, uh, problems this summer, and I suspect last year with someone stealing copper from city property and private property. Uh, I suspect the sign of the Economic Times, our officers apprehended that subject Saturday, coming out of one of our abandoned buildings in town. I made an arrest, uh, executed a couple of search warrants. He was arraigned a couple yesterday on two felony charges, so we're happy to have him arrested, hopefully deter future behavior. We were able to recover some city property, but the rest of the copper was sold, so it's happy to be able to impact that, um, so.
Was it an adult or a kid or?
It was, it was an adult. Um, it was a great job by the officers. Again, they executed search warrants, they kinda pushed it, find out who's involved. And we're still investigating to see if there's more subjects involved. At this time, we think that this person, as far as the cutting of copper, acted alone, so. Anything else?
Thank you.
Good work.
Mr. Milton, do you have anything you would like to say?
Seems like I'm always the one who has to bring up road closures, but, um, so we have, uh, last, last week I talked about road closures on US 31. They did get in and out of there very quickly with the manholes, closed it, did the work, and are gone, but they do gotta come back through the pipes. And I, my understanding is next Monday, they'll be closing down US 31 with a rolling closure in the center lane. They'll be working the center lane like we've seen before, and that could be up to two weeks of, they could be there. Uh, the other potential closure that's gonna come up, and we don't know the exact date yet, and we'll share those with Kelly. So we post them as, at Jackson and Van Buren, the work we're doing on those streets have water mains that are completely installed, except for the connections to the main under US 31 into the first lane. So we'll have to close off two lanes there. There'll be one-way traffic, um, for about a day at each location, but the exact days, I, we're still not confirming that. So they're coming up, just wanna give you a heads up, and we'll post that on the, our webpage, too, so.
When are they gonna start on Fifth Street, Sean? Fifth to Seventh, and over the city?
Um, there's a long story there, but there, uh, the, the main reason they haven't started is, uh, the, the directional drill bore, the pipe we have to bore underneath the railroad tracks, has been delayed for a lot of different reasons. Railroad Company, um, getting approvals, Flagmen, and right now, we're dealing with an issue with the clay, how high the clay is, and the contractor's got some issues with it, but that's all been kinda ironed out, and we will be boring that soon now, the next week or so here. And then they will take off from there, um, Hallick Contracting, well, with the, the 48-inch sewer, will cross country to Seventh, and they probably will, um, get, uh, maybe to Seventh, and then they may shut it down for the winter, and then really, most of that project will probably kick in next year. Then the first thing they'll do next year is continue that sewer all the way down, um, Seventh, up Ramsdale, and they'll get to the SSO 18, to make that connection, 'cause that's what we have to do to make Eagle happy for that permit issue. And then they'll come back and do the rest of that work, which is substantial. There's a lot of work to do. So they'll be on that all next summer. Uh, they may get started, though, in a couple, maybe in a week or two, if they get this bore completed, so.
Chief Cameron?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing? Everybody else has something.
Josh already gave all the rules, so it's, we're just happy that we received that.
Can I say nothing further?
Chief, are you ready to put that new, uh, ambulance?
It's working very well. You guys are very happy. It's been a lot smoother ride than our, than our older ones, so we've had a lot of, a lot of compliments on them.
About calls, he has a lot of calls.
Yeah, our call volume has updated. It's not excessive, it's not that much of a, but it worked off a little bit.
Good. Are you?
Okay.
What's your new journey?